Before we start our meeting, I have just a quick thought. You know, every month we do a reflection on something. And now I'd like to keep the people in the medical republic with horrible hurricanes. You see the views on TV, 180 miles an hour, it's just like mind blowing. How do they survive with what they have? Ah, in your own way of Mother Sylas and in their behalf to support their improvements and what they're going through. So just a moment on their behalf, please. Thank you.
All right. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to call an order for the right of meeting of the Orange County Board of Trustees. Please give the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, my call, Mrs. Debbett. Here, Mr. Ferrera.
Here.
And Mr. Sylas.
Here.
Just want to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded for informational purposes. Um, I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the minutes of the meetings held in October of 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the meetings held in October 25.
I'll second that motion.
And roll call, Mr. Suddles.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
And Mrs. Debbett.
Yep.
Um, I'd also like to, for the next two, I'd like to table them because I have not had a chance to do the bank reconciliation yet. And um, I should have that done within, within a week, so.
So you want to let's do.
Do you want to do me?
Yeah, do, yeah, separate.
Okay. The table, the payment and bills.
I'd like to make a motion to table the payment and bills until the bank reconciliation in this month.
In the month of.
Put them up, post in October.
October.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Mrs. Debbett. Yes, Mr. Suddles.
Yes.
And motion to table the acceptance of the financial statement.
Make a motion to table the financial statements. Is that October also?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Uh, you will provide those in a month?
I'll try and get those as soon as I get to reconciliation.
Okay. I'll second.
Uh, roll call, Mrs. Debbett. Yes, Mr. Suddles.
Yes.
And Mr. Ferrera.
Yes.
Um, I could not find any communications for this last month. However, I found September's. And there was one from the Trump County Commissioners regarding a permit to board and work in the right of way of Muggon Chase. And also one from Buckeye Civil Design, uh, CD regarding drift wet estates in Brookfield Township. And that was, that was it. Wasn't that like we got a letter from someone saying that was just kind of a roll call?
No.
I never saw a map that's included in it.
I don't know if it was on, they had made some, some adjustments. We sort of had a, Jamie, you know if that's been done? Driftwood, is the county okay?
The county is okay, yes.
Okay.
It's not done yet, but.
All right, because this is probably, this is from Mr. Gonda, so it's, it's Joe Gonda's.
Yeah, the county approved it. I, I don't think they have to do the paving till next year.
Okay. Do you have a rundown notice?
I do.
I'd like to review it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Because we were down there.
I don't have it with me.
No, no, two years ago, we were down there and I thought that we were gonna have to redo the, the storm sewer.
No, they've come to agree on the storm sewer. They, they did a couple things, they fixed a few things. And they gotta do it, they've gotta do detention pond down there.
Well, are they gonna, are they going to include the trustees in that? Because don't we inherit the, the storm sewer system once it, once we get it?
You inherit the storm sewer system, yes.
And I thought there was problems with some of the pipe underneath the ground.
They fixed, yeah, they fixed some of that.
So you have all that documentation? If you could, I'd like to.
Good point, Dan. That was, that was a big issue.
Yeah, because the non-ours and that's, that, that is fifty, over fifty years old, that infrastructure, that piece of property.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any comments on the agenda items in the week? Okay. Chief Kasevich.
All right, thank you. For the month of October, your officers responded to 543 calls, wrote 75 reports, 14 of them crash reports, 61 incident reports. Uh, there'd be 15 arrests, five of which were assault, domestic violence or protection order violations, two more arrests. Uh, issued 21 traffic citations, six for equipment related offenses, and 13 moving related offenses, and one for a parking violation. We had three calls for burglaries or bringing DMEs, 11 calls for assaults or domestic disputes or disturbances, one reported criminal trespass, four vandalism or criminal damaging complaints, four theft complaints, and one identity theft complaint. We had five calls for threats menacing or telephone harassment, two drug overdoses, 10 disturbances or fight calls, five calls for suspicious activity, five calls for suspicious people, and 12 calls for suspicious vehicles. Uh, we handled 19 traffic or parking complaints, assisted 10 disabled vehicles, and had 16 animal complaints and 12 alarm drops. Your officers patrol 10,340 miles and for half of the month used 423 gallons of gas. We had 16 hours of reverse overtime and 103.5 hours of regular overtime for a total of 119.5. That does include trick or treat, safety awareness, so it's, uh, they also did some firearm string, so it is still a little bit high. That's all in the report.
What's the fuel for half a month besides that?
Uh, the, the report only went through the 18th. There's something going on with it, so we're only able to see how much fuel we use up until the 18th.
Since we redid this, we've had certainly problems with our fuel documentation, haven't we?
Couple times, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Chief?
Chief, may I update on the cruiser?
Uh, they came out and, um, Arrow, um, Arrow claims came out and inspected it. And from talking to the inspector, he says that they're, they're gonna end up totaling it out. He just has to get a cost of exchanging equipment, uh, pulling what is still good in the car and, uh, what it costs to put it into another. Uh, for those who are unaware, uh, one of our officers struck it here while going to an emergency call and it, uh, and it didn't hit totally the car. So we're, uh, in the process of, uh, working with the insurance on, on replacing it. It puts us down the car. And unfortunately, it came right at the time where things were looking good. We just, uh, at the last department head meeting, we were able to hire James Cowan. He was an officer left and went to, uh, Akron, uh, decided Akron wasn't for him, wanted to come back to Brookfield, which I'll take him back in. Uh, so we, uh, we're finally back up to full time staff, first time since I've been chief to have full staff, but now we're down the car. So, um, we're just waiting for them to put the monetary value and once they do so, we'll be able to decide how we wanna proceed from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, the fire report from Captain.
Good evening. Uh, the fire department responded to 211 emergencies, uh, in the month of October. Those calls consisted of 167 of them being medical, uh, six structure fires, nine vehicle crashes, three vehicle fires, um, six miscellaneous fires such as rubbish, oil and gas well, emergencies, fresh fires, burning flames, and then, uh, four service calls, gas based carbon monoxide smoke investigations and public assist. Went to five wires and tree sounds and, uh, one alarm investigation, fire fire investigation. Mutual aid, we had 25 calls that required vigilee in, and 21 times we answered the vigilee called by the communities. Uh, goes down to, uh, general section. Uh, we had the junior fire academy held October 19th, very well received and successful. Uh, I was, uh, kind of a part of that, main part of that. The kids seemed to be, uh, enjoying themselves there. They learned a lot and had a lot of fun. So us as firefighters, uh, trying to be involved in the community, it's a very good thing for us and I thought it was pretty cool. Uh, safety night and, uh, we were out with trick or treating and got that done successfully. Um, ladder, uh, equipment and apparatus, ladder team is currently out of service due to a brake issue. Uh, we had a mechanic look at the brakes after a concern was raised by one of the firefighters. Uh, found that the pad wore beyond, uh, what they should be and that should be getting repaired this week sometime. And then moving on to the motions, we would like to motion hire Toby Mizway as a part time firefighter to paramedic at a rate consistent with the position contingent upon successful passing of a local background investigation and one year probationary period.
You know, what, what, sorry. I don't know if you want to discuss that. Chief, what does that mean? I've never seen it put a rate consistent with the position, a contingent. I know that, I mean, is, what's the hourly rate?
The hourly rate, uh, is it seventeen? Fire medic, seventeen.
Seventeen, or seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. I don't know what that was, what they're, it's wording over there. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to hire Toby Mizway as a part time firefighter to paramedic at a rate consistent with the position contingent upon successful passage of a local background investigation and with a one year probationary period. I'll second that motion.
And roll call, Mrs. Debbett? Yes. Mr. Suddles?
Yes.
And Mr. Ferrera?
Yes.
Okay, is that all right, Captain?
Yep.
Any questions? Okay, road report.
Thank you. Uh, road report for the month of October, we had 868 regular hours, we had nine overtime hours, and those were on the Wildwood paving project. Uh, for a total of 877 hours worked. So divide that into the 40 administration, 215 in road projects, uh, some of that was Wildwood, or excuse me, Campbell and Beaumont. We had a couple spots on those roads that we needed to patch, uh, and then we did some work on the Wildwood Storm Project. Uh, we had 150 hours routine road maintenance. We swept, uh, the parking lot behind the fire department and we also swept, uh, AB Boil. That's the section we targeted ship from Route 7 to Albright McKay. Um, we had 63 hours equipment and maintenance repairs. We're working on the sweeper and we're starting to get the pile trucks prepped for winter operations. We had 150, uh, five hours into cemetery, four burials and one cremation. Uh, we had shop time, 25 hours miscellaneous with 75 hours. A lot of that was working on the parking lot, Moley Green and the Majori Park, which, uh, last year we did, took the garbage can out of there. I know that was a concern, that was a problem this year.
No, you, now you put it back, right?
Yeah, we put it back in the spring, but I know, uh, and we need to get down there because I saw a bunch of garbage.
There's garbage down there today and appears to have spilled, because I didn't.
Yeah. I don't know if it's a cone or if it's people.
Well, there'd be a lot of kids in that area shortly before that.
Okay.
So. It spilled today, so.
We typically remove, remove the can about the same time we close the park, which is this month, so.
Speaking of that, are the dumpsters, are they gonna stay or go?
I don't know. That, that's up to them. I don't really need it to stay, but they can.
You see, don't they charge us each time they take and bring it?
Yeah, yes.
If they can leave it there and not charge us a monthly charge, it would keep out.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mary. Uh, we had four hours road information, basically Wildwood Drive, we had issue two, 150 hours to park. Uh, we did, we did some, uh, back in the, I call it the soccer field, the field in the back, there was some drainage issue back there, so we cut that ditch we established so it's, the water stays in the ditch and doesn't come out of the field. Because they kept that, that back part of that field wet well into, I think it was July before we could cut that back there. So we straightened that out and I think it shouldn't be a problem next year. Um, I'm gonna dispense with the rate and the fuel. So I did the fuel report and it only produced fuel up till October 18th. Uh, I rebooted it at the computer and then tried it, still didn't work, I rebooted it out at the pumps and it didn't make any difference. So I've gotta call the tech and have the tech come out and look at it and see what's going on. So that, the fuel report is kind of running, it's a, it's a half month, basically.
Well, will we be able to hit those figures?
Yeah, I think that the data's in there and it just has something going on with the.
I think it's important that we try how much fuel we use.
Yeah.
Um, Chairman, a question. Um, we talked about Superior, we talked about sweeping out of AB Boil or wherever.
Yes.
Are we, are we gonna be able to sweep Superior?
Yep. Uh, item one, the road, road items, I just, basically just, um, have an update when we're at the projects. Uh, we, we did complete paving on Wildwood Drive and Crestwood. So, um, those two were projects extended from last year. Uh, the, the storm sewer project down there is in about 90% complete. They could, they still have to get the, inside of the basins have to be cut, the pipes have to be cut, and they have to mortar inside the basins. And there's a few things back at, at the pond they have to do yet. But for the most part, uh, that project's gonna be completed. I think, yeah, some other items I had to take care of this week on another project, they're coming back next week. So I think it'll be completed before the 20th, which is their next pay draw on the 20th of November, so I expect it to be completed by then. I do expect us to have some touch up restoration to do next spring. So if you give any calls from homeowners in reference to their grass, the grass seed.
That would be from the contractor then, I don't know.
That would be from the contractor, that's correct.
We didn't have any, would we end budget? We threw over the, you know?
It's, yeah, I think as far as I know, I, that's last draw. But, yeah, they said they pretty well on a run budget, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna be drawing.
And I did talk to, uh, did you talk to the county about the, um, engineering cost services?
No, that's what I was gonna, let's make sure that, because we do have to present those figures to the commissioners. Let's see what the total cost and we can do a breakdown. You know, we, we had to do the, the work we had to do, we had to pay the survey or all that. And we can put that all in one document so that I can present that to the commissioners.
Okay.
That was their money, part of the money.
So, um, those, those two, Wildwood and Crestwood, they were two separate projects. In other words, they were, one was rolled in with a grant, uh, Wildwood, and the other one, Crestwood is part of the loan. So I told the rental contractors that I would wait, uh, I, I have one draw in the process, which, do you know, they paid, that I've gotta push through for Albright McKay. But I told rental contractors that I wouldn't submit another one until they finished the sanitary sewer, uh, adjustments on Wildwood, because I'm not gonna, I don't wanna have to do two draws, right? I just wanna get it done and so then I can fill all of it and that'll complete that project.
What do they have to do with the sanitary?
They got raised, they got adjusted. They're all buried at Blacktop right now.
Oh, you mean, okay. I thought you had the Wild, they were with the Wildwood project. I thought we were mixing these.
No, no, this is the paving, this is part of the paving project. So he told me that, uh, he thought they would do that next week.
Do you think, uh, this week we have to start paying back the loan?
Yeah, but they only start the loans, so I don't know, I don't know, they, they do the loans in July and January, so I don't, we'll, we'll turn in and do a completion on it, but I don't know how quickly they do the loan payment. So I, I'm, I'm gonna set it up, my budget to pay in January.
All right.
Just in case and it goes to July and that's fine. The, the other project, they're supposed to start Wednesday on, out here. That's what he told me. So Wednesday, uh, we'll probably have to do something, just block this off and I think he's gonna do that to come and off and get it a little bit, get it blocked off so the company goes.
They're gonna cut into asphalt.
They're gonna cut the concrete, block that concrete out, they're gonna cut the, they're not gonna, it shouldn't have to cut into the asphalt. It'll be all concrete, so it'll be the, the block out here and then it'll be that little piece of block that goes over the catch base.
So we can do that on that? We did it before, we had maintenance coming down here, just tell them to redirect to the front. Yeah. I was gonna say, we could pre, pre-set it. I'll make up the little, because I think Towns did it before, before shutdown.
Okay. Yes. Then, then the, the final, I, I have as far as the, um, status of projects is the main project that was scheduled to take place this year. Uh, I know, yeah. So you're gonna, you're gonna be back next week or weekend? Okay. So you guys wanna sit down with them and talk to them about it? I mean, I don't, I, I couldn't give an update this week on where they're at, what the projects.
Yeah, I talked to Gary Shaker, did, either of you talk to him? He says this is common, it happens, but we should get something in writing from them. They, they're obligated, man, first, to get it done next year.
Yeah, and I did talk to them about that and they know that, so they don't have a problem in writing and holding the current pricing. Okay, that, that's it. We'll show any questions on any, any projects or any.
Quick question, you've been down in Bedford, across over 62, just to tend to manage a lot of dirt being moved. You know what's going on down there?
You know where he means. Right before you get to Arthur Street, all the way down past Broadway. Yeah, I noticed that dirt.
Yeah, a lot of dirt.
Put, uh, dirt, you put them in some roof rack and.
Oh, I'll take a look, no, I, I didn't.
You mean on Vetter, really?
They, they, not much.
Yeah, all the way down Vetter, you know, past.
South, south side.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably one of the.
Is it in Hobart or is it?
It's one of the last, it's in, it's in Brookfield. It's one of the last probably properties in Brookfield. It's right on the line, on the right hand side going down. Can't miss it, just curious.
I'll, I'll look more and see if I can find out what's going on. But I haven't, I haven't been down there, so I can see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item number two, and I do, I do this every year, so just to kind of, so winter is coming, so, um, everybody's always rusty at the beginning of the year. So we start getting snow and ice, just kind of give yourself extra time when you're going somewhere. Uh, if you, if you tend to go, your route tends to be up hills or down hills, maybe adjust your routes a little bit so you can take, uh, flatter, flatter routes wherever you're going. So I tell people, and you know, like the West Hill, if you, you can get up on West Hill without going up one of them hills like Lincoln or Warren Sharon. If you go up side of State Line, State Line's probably the better road to go because Sharon uses straight salt and usually they, they put a lot of salt on that road and usually it's pretty clear. So, um, you know, just, just be careful because it's, it's kind of, like I said, the first, they're calling for a little bit of snow next week. So, like I said, everybody's, you know, if you gotta, make sure you have emergency stuff with you if you're on trips out there in Brookfield, you know, you get strange, we'll help you out. But if you get out of Brookfield, you never know. You know, it's amazing, so. But, um, yeah, it's that time of year and we're, we are getting the trucks ready, so, um, we have salt and we have some over the cabin. So we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as material. Uh, item, cemetery items, the fence panels were replaced. We did go through it and I had John clean up some of those, you know, the, the ones that the paint was coming off of. So I had him scrape those down and white brush those and we painted them again. It looks, it looks better. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know why that stuff came off. Shouldn't have came off like that, it's peeled off, just, I don't know.
Especially with paper fence.
Yeah. That's a shame, but. So that, that's done, it looks better. Uh, and again, so this week we are closing the bathrooms at the park, so, uh, we will do that sometime this week. They'll be closed up. I had the, both the, the furnace at the park and the furnace at the cemetery, I had, uh, Mooney Heating go over and make sure it all went, because we don't want the, the cemetery's not that critical, but the park, we leave the bathrooms, we don't want freezing. And that's it for the road report. Thank you.
Real quick, the, we met with Ocharma of Leechers, he said you're gonna try to see if we did that.
Yeah, I talked to Tim about doing some of that, so he's supposed to give me a plan on that. Uh, I don't know if, um, I, I was, I didn't ask, uh, Tim today, did, Matt was supposed to do something with that poles last weekend, or?
I don't, they, I guess, maybe didn't.
They did, because of the weather or?
I don't know.
Okay.
It was supposed to be Saturday, but they weren't down there.
Okay.
And you have a picture of the, the electric box that he's gonna be drawing from, it's right behind the field, so, but he's gonna put everything out, I guess, if he has a mix.
That, Ocharma, I, I received it in the mail today.
He hasn't asked you.
And analysis and I'll get it to all.
Yeah.
Department, because we, they would like us to respond to if we are ready, ready to be things they suggested, one by one. So I'll get a copy because every, every department.
Yeah, I did, well, the, he kind of hit us on the, the placement of the, some of the stuff at the new pump.
Yeah.
But I, no, I talked to him, but I haven't talked to Dan yet.
Go ahead.
Um, about that because they, they put a gas station, so I would think they know the code.
Well, my read from that meeting was, we told you, there's a problem, it's like, we told you. Tell you if you don't wanna do anything, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if they said they would still pay a claim, but it may not go as smoothly as we want, we don't, at least.
Yeah, I mean, the.
If you get even a writing, uh, the person installing said this is well within NFA or whatever, then would you present that as part of the bar?
Well, part, part of that, the gas pump was, you know, the, I guess the guy's a fire marshal. He, he has to come and inspect it. And he inspected it, I was there when he did it, and he, he approved everything that was done, so.
We should point that out.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we have to do what they tell, but we can say why we did.
Yeah, and like you said, document.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We are moving on to the code report. I could read this.
Okay. Thank you. I'll do the rest.
Please don't stress yourself. All right, uh, code enforcement update, permits, 5760 AB Boil Road, full basement modular home, 68A2 Parkway Drive and building. New complaints and violation, 8176 Nicholas, general condition of dwelling, Valley Plaza, Sparkle Park and Mile, the light pole situation, 7,000 block of Rose Avenue, someone's living in another home, 8,000 block of West Columbia, trash debris, 7807 Locusts, tires and other solid waste. Uh, 791 sign sewage discharge complaint, 1132 Hummer Thomas Road is the same. 563 Nally Streets, solid waste complaint. 716 State Line, South State Line Road is the same also. Trump County Land Bay demolition projects, demolition completed by Serenaze, 846 Hulk, 790 Firm, 7932 Rose, 8141 Davis, 8267 Davis, 1299 Broadway, 8244 Ohio, 8156 Ohio, and 693 Grover are scheduled for later this week. Address requests, northeast corner of Albright McKay and Stuart Chan, is a single family dwelling to be built. Next up is the payment report, trustee.
Thank you. For the month of October, a $32 was collected and towed 134 miles and driven by Yes, Pinchot and Puvak, a total of 12 and one quarter hours. Thank you, uh, for those who drove and if you have any interest, we're still looking for digital drive. Glad to see the vans up and running. We have our office coordinator, like she, like she did her whole, like she's getting it done. Our drivers are coming out and we're getting that stuff done, so I'm glad it was something that was noticeable or we were.
All right, so you're gonna skip straight up to call the comments, only thing we ask is that you come up here, state your name, address, and let us see your shiny face on the YouTube video, this man.
So, I'm Anna Murphy, library manager. Um, I just wanted to just tell you that the library continues to offer a diverse schedule of programs for our community and local residents of all ages. Just in November, we have weekly workshops, storytimes for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, programs on healthy aging and nutrition, and I'm interested to come and register to, to somebody, um, to help with their reading skills. We also have the very popular culinary delight charcuterie program, which built in Monday, so sorry if you come. And then I'm really excited to share that we have Jingle Eagle returning on December sixth. It's going to be from forty-sixth and on the green. Uh, we're taking donations for prepackaged cookies, and we'll also have hot cocoa and hot dogs, while supplies last. Uh, photos with Mrs. Claus, and a sing-along storytime, what's that?
You personally know Mrs. Claus?
I, I talked to her every so often, I hear she's got, as an addition for our hospital.
She bought a cloak for this year.
She did, yes.
It'll be great.
Hopefully she won't have to have a child help turn pages this year.
Yes.
Um, we're also gonna have live ukulele music, activities for kids, several community organizations are participating again this year, and this wonderful holiday event would not be possible without the collaboration between the township, the library, and the schools, so.
And I think, thank you, and I think we should be more specific, is Shannon, please, on that, she's.
Shannon's fantastic.
She is, I appreciate it.
We will, one other thing, we will have a tent this year, it's our goal, we're gonna get a tent in the middle, it's gonna be a decent sized tent, and everyone's going to be under the tent, and they might be.
Except for Miss Claus.
Except for Miss Claus. But we're gonna try to do something there, you can, everybody, you know, won't affect it.
Is it like the one we use for Memorial Day that Jamie puts up, or something bigger?
Maybe bigger, but we'll see, we'll see. Is that twelve by twelve? We'd like it to be.
Well, the other one's bigger.
Yeah, I'd like, oh, we have it.
Yeah, we use that one for Memorial Day.
Oh, well, then maybe we have a tent, does it have sidewalks?
No. Man, the other thing that they have that I utilize a lot, libraries have a large selection of videos.
Yes, lots of videos.
Which you can get from your place, and you can return them.
Any of our locations.
Any location, or you can get from any other.
How would we?
Which is, I mean, we use it when we go camping, when you get videos and, and you just draw them off.
I like to say the library's more than just books, we have so much going on, and so much, and so many work things.
It's a friend.
Hey, check out the ukulele.
Maybe you'll just want to pay.
Okay, anyone else who would want to, I don't know your names, sir.
Hey, I worked on electric bills, right, we talked about that.
You did, and you fixed it.
Truck visit six seventy-five, on Grover. Shannon answered with Pete's report, my one question about the demolitions, but I do have another question, the status of the waterline replacement on Grover. There's some company, Kellyan Company, looks like this big truck is digging like the size of a manhole cover holes all down the north side of the road. Maybe that's normal, but is that not really close to the fixing the waterline?
They're putting a new waterline in.
I know they are, but you think that's gonna happen this year?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, they're starting.
So what are, what are they doing with it? It looks like almost if a truck that cleans out septic tanks, it got, it has this big, like, I don't know, it's plastic or rubber arm that goes down, and they dig a hole.
Uh, they may be, they may be potty utilities, but sometimes they do that locate the utilities, the depth, so they know where they have to go to miss them.
Okay.
Yeah, so that could be what they're doing.
So you think it'll be this year?
Oh, I, I know, absolutely, because, because they're, they're working on Grover, Lucy, um.
I knew those two, I didn't know there was.
Yeah, there's a couple more. John, just so you know, to piggyback on that a little bit, they're gonna put that water line, it's gonna be kind of in the middle of the road, middle of one of the lanes, right down the lane of traffic. Aqua has agreed to compensate the township for paving half the road. Um, and then we, or is that next year?
Next year.
Next year we will pave that road. They're gonna, they're gonna do the trench, and while they do it, it might be that way during winter, but they're gonna put asphalt in it also, I believe. And then we are going to redo that road, so it's gonna be bumped up because of doing the work.
Yeah.
But, uh, Aqua has agreed to, instead of, sometimes they pave half, and you got like, you know, State Line half pay, they're just gonna give, the, the money's gonna come into the township, they're gonna pay, we got an engineer's estimate of what it was gonna cost, they're paying half to it. Because they're not doing it completely half, but that's another story.
So explain what, again, what happens this year, because they're gonna put water line, and they're just gonna cover it?
They're gonna cut, they'll cut the trench.
Right.
They'll do water line, and they'll put a base asphalt. Yes, it'll be blacktop.
They'll do the full thing.
And then we'll build down, we gonna build it?
Do we do it first?
Build it down, and then pave the whole road next.
That's a lot better, because I think we, at one time, we were last, we were year twenty of the.
Yeah, we, we moved that, because they're doing water line, we moved it, and, and they had agreed, like Dan said, they had agreed to pay for half of the cost. But their half of the cost includes milling and doing two courses of asphalt. The only thing they wouldn't pay for, because it's on Thomas Side, was the manholes, sewer pit holes. Because they're on your side, you think they're putting on the other side, yeah.
Well, and I encourage all our neighbors to take pictures, because that way they have a picture of the way it is. Because the last time it was worked out on their street, the contractor, I don't remember who it was, didn't need it the way it was when they began the construction.
You can tell by the condition of your road, or it's like this.
Yeah, at the very beginning of the road, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I didn't have that on my list. Those water lines are gonna be done this year, so they'll be, I actually, I think they're starting in a couple of weeks.
I think the last time I heard that they were definitely going to do Lucy, but they might not get the room, but now.
They, they, yeah, they coordinated to do it this year. So Lucy, Grover, a part of Robert Street, and then two of the alleys, but some of those are getting directional ore, so they're just, they won't be tearing up the whole road. Lucy, Grover, they've been, uh, a trench all the way down to.
Good.
I checked.
Somebody else? Okay, on trustee comments. Carrera.
Carrera. Uh, just a follow-up, Safe Night was a really nice success. We need participation, I was there, and we have number ten to get on your list for next year, fire department, please. Other communities, smaller, there's other community organizations there, so. Nice plus, and Lisa, our new secretary administrator, stepped up and learned it, and she planned a job about Waffle, which was on her plate, and she had some help to do. Nice tribute job. If you have a better, get there next year, if you didn't remember, go out to vote tomorrow.
The one thing I want to point out, it's, more said about Safety Night, it's true, but also Halloween. Um, something we should never take for granted, because it takes a lot of effort, and they work around emergencies, but our police and fire are on patrol. Um, and I know our fire also sent an engine or a vehicle up to Hartford, and that didn't be, they contracted fire protection from us. Uh, that doesn't happen in every community, and the fact that they're there, um, they're actually, but the kids are, it's great, visibility thing, I think, makes our streets safer. And I don't know, I don't know if you should bring this up, but we, our trick or treat ended about fifteen minutes earlier than the end, and we happened to go down Warren Sharon Road, and I don't know if you ever saw how many people were dying in Valleyview, but they were, they were backed up to the State Line on Warren Sharon Road, and as far as looking down Valleyview Drive, all I could see is there, there was over four hundred.
Over four hundred, yes, that's fantastic.
So that visibility of our police and fire helped in that case also, but I don't take that for granted, I appreciate our safety forces, uh, efforts. I don't think they have anything else.
I just, safe thing goes for me, I'm on the other end of a kid trick or treat, so I really appreciate keeping our road safe, and it was nice to see. Uh, the guys and gals out on patrol, uh, safety unit again, above and beyond attendance, and our servants. And just want to thank Jamie too, on a separate occasion.
Jamie.
Just wanted to thank you all the effort that everybody put in, along with the storm, trying to, it was nice, um, put in a lot of late nights, so appreciate you, so. Okay.
Happier than you need to stop.
Just real quick, uh, we need to schedule a couple more meetings with, we're looking at, uh, fire.
Negotiations?
Yep. So maybe we can get back there.
I think we should boil up a seventeen, right?
Yeah.
Also, um, talked to Becky Whitman, Hartford, this is elections over.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know if you guys mind, but maybe one, a day, just kind of.
Well, yeah, it's not, can't do it all on one day, but.
No, yeah, it started after. Yep. Yeah, that's.
Ten.
Okay, and that's it.
Make the motion.
Where is? Yeah, I'm not talking to you, you're. Yeah. And I'll have to go back to read all the money I should remember, and then I'll place it out there, she needs that quickly.